The regular reading of the City of San Juan Bautista is comfortable now, very special. Where's the leading challenge to be the office? Our five divisions to declare of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Flores?
Here.
Vice Mayor Edge, here. Councilmember DeRiz. Councilmember Freeman?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan. Afore, Miss President.
I will open the forum comment period. This is for comment on items that are not on the agenda.
Michael Sint?
Hello, my name is Michael Sint and I live on Thomas Lane. I wanted to call your attention to the propane cannons out on the Coke farm. One is near the intersection of First and Monterey that has been operating for about a week. It is too close to residences. It's about 375 feet from our home and about 500 feet from the homes on the escarpment. It is very loud and it sounds like a large caliber rifle going off every 20 seconds. As of yesterday, it was operating from about 7:15 a.m. to about 5:15 p.m. That's 10 hours a day. During those 10 hours, the cannon would have discharged 1,800 times every day. No resident of this town should be subjected to that level of constant noise. We are not able to participate in the quiet enjoyment of our property. Don has been working with Mr. Coke and I thank him for his efforts. It seems that they will try to reduce the hours that the cannons operate, but they estimate that it will still run for about two more weeks. The farm is portraying this as a food safety issue by keeping the birds away, but that somehow makes tormenting the neighborhood okay. If there are any steps that the city council could take to help resolve this situation, it would be greatly appreciated. Moving forward, I am advocating an ordinance to establish limits as to how close to residences cannons can be placed. I understand that it's difficult to draft a noise ordinance in general, but this is not a noisy band that will be playing for three hours. This is an explosive device that discharges every 20 seconds, hour after hour, day after day. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Rachel Ponce?
I just wanted to thank you for the work that is being done on Fourth Street. I didn't think that it would ever happen and thank you that it finally did. I just hope that it works. I noticed that the drivers are still speeding after the Mariposa stop sign and all of a sudden they realize that there's a flag person there and this table. So maybe painting the tables fluorescent, with fluorescent paint or something might be a little more helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rachel. That's all the cards I have.
So move the agenda forward to the third item, consent items. All matters listed under the consent agenda may be enacted by one motion authorizing actions indicated to those items so designated. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by a member of the city council, staff member, or a citizen. First one is approved affidavit opposing the agenda. B is approved affidavit opposing public hearing notice. Do we actually, which is 1111?
But I have a question.
Yes.
I want to know why we're approving the minutes for April 2nd. Did we not already, did we already? I remember, but I just was wondering, I thought we had already approved it.
No.
I guess not.
I didn't find where they had been approved after doing the search.
It's just that I, you know, I'm a little bit mature in age and I can't really remember that much. Yeah, I did, I did.
Approved resolution for street closure for farmers market. Approved resolution for street closure for Fiesta Run and Dia de la Monta's party. Approved varnished 2019 National Flag commending the rental visit of the government. And the U.R. to resolve a dispute about interpretation. The second meeting and adoption of the order. Wave reading ordinances and resolutions of the national agenda beyond tires. The chair will maintain a motion for approved of consent items.
I move that we approve all of the consent items, A through G.
Do I hear a second?
Second. They were motioning for a second. And I can't pack carry on the bank on the back because my pen just exploded. They're very helpful, City of Kansas County.
Do we have any discretion?
Ink everywhere.
Any discretion in this?
On the passage of the consent agenda?
Do we need, do we look for the, the?
No, no, we're passed out.
Alright. Do we call for a motion?
We called for the motion, we got the motion. Just call for the vote.
Let's call for the vote, call for the vote. So wait for Mary?
If you think she'll vote, no. We got three, come on, let's go.
Call for the question, all in favor, respond.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Move the board. Presentations before my then report. Bringing the substantial city year program to San Juan Bautista by P.H. D. H. Professor. Daniel for foundation here?
No, Mayor, he has a class until 6:00 and he'll be coming as soon as he can, probably closer to 7:00 p.m.
Okay, we'll just move that to the end of the agenda.
Thank you.
You know, we had a really, really nice weekend last weekend, perfect and long day, very tiring, but we'd like to show our appreciation for all the work that went into making this event a really good event. So what I would like to do is recognize the volunteers that helped out of this. So if you're here, I'll go over there and see if you're here, come up and get it, if not, I'll just give it to you later, I guess. This is a certificate of appreciation for the City of San Juan Bautista, presented to Mary Clark. Thank you for your dedicated service to the community and endless hard work that made the San Juan Bautista ses- quintcentennial celebration of successful events. Is Mary Clark here? The same, same goes for the, Scott Freels? Scott? Shawna Freels?
She's with Scott.
Michelle Leonard? Hollister, Tim Cumbers. Darlene Boyd? Alright.
Somebody, alright, thank you very much.
Lisa Gensena? Thank you, Lisa. Catherine Do? Bonnie Campbell?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, my goodness.
Georgiana Galarti?
My right hand.
Shirley Brewer? No Shirley? Jennifer Ponte? Anne Fritsch? Very good job. Bob Quaid? You're here, I'm not here. Vanda Gibber?
She's away from the castle.
And Heidi Baltz?
Miss Lee's play here?
If you don't know Heidi, boy, let me tell you, that woman is everywhere. And she does all sorts of things, you know. Early in the morning, I see a guy across the, what's he doing up there, he's broke something, something for the day. This is a really good effort and the community really came up and worked together and it was really good. So makes, makes our communities feel a lot better. So I'd like to thank all of you who participated, all of you who volunteered and hopefully the next event that we have, we put it together just as well as we did thanks to them. Thank you.
You did a great job, too.
Well, I've got some other. I don't have certificates for these people, but I would like to recognize them as well. Our city staff, Paul, Nick, Todd, and Meno. The recology crew, the Hollister Fire Department, we have chief Kenny Martin and staff, the sheriffs, Captain Taylor, thank you sir, and the San Juan committee. We recognize all the agencies together as an agency because most of us, that's our job. So, you know, those of you who volunteer, you got the orders. And these will be in the city clerk's office or trish, whatever, they can pick them up. Okay? Thank you so much. We shall move on. Monthly financial statements?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, just some highlights as I look through this, some explanations. We should be at about 8% in our year-to-date expenses and some of the ones that are higher than that, I just wanted to give a little background on. For example, on the first page, you see a 14% expenditure in the gas tax fund. That's because we're moving forward with the design of our Third Street improvements. So that's why that one is spending quickly, it's a capital improvement money that's being drawn down. On the back page, guess what, the Affordable Housing Fund is at 133%. That's because we're working on our housing element. So we will be back at mid-year with a budget adjustment to straighten that up. We have significant reserves, sufficient reserves to cover that expense and, and we'll be at an end of our housing element work by December 31st, so that's, that's a good thing. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have about the financial statements.
Any questions? Okay, if there's no questions, please move forward to city manager's report.
City manager's report, thank you, Mayor. I noticed a few typos, I apologize for those, first and foremost. I, I left at lunch today thinking lions, tigers, and bears. I was, I was thinking speed tables, bird cannons, and smelly sewer lines. Those are our lions and tigers and bears this month. Yeah, I did, I did talk with Mr. Coke and we were looking into the, the bird cannons. We had several questions come to us, being loud and upsetting, including Councilor Vice Mayor Edge, those people who live especially among that border of our, of our property, so.
I can hear it, too.
You can hear it, too, yeah. I met with Mr. Coke on several matters earlier this week and that's one that he's followed up on. The sewer lines, we're identifying an issue that seems to be a disconnect between the ending of our previous contractor Bracewell and the beginning of Cypress where there's a list station on the Coke property that, that used to receive injection service. And so we need to get Cypress fired up and back out there and start to treat that sewage coming in from our industrial users. That's where the smell is coming from and we tracked it down and I'm, and I'm planning to meet with the other growers, industrial users out there as well. So I think we found the problem, so hopefully it's just temporary. It's definitely worse when it's hot, right? Vice Mayor. The speed tables, mostly good support for them. They will be curing for about four to six weeks and then they will be painted. So they will be marked and then there will be signs to warn drivers that they're coming. We did receive a letter of interim operations approval of our filtration system at well six. So that's been a long time coming, I think I informed the council of that. I just wanted to emphasize all the hard work and, and money that went into that filtration system out at well six. That means that we're on our way of being on track with the water board and being in compliance, complete compliance. So that's really good news, so that's a good thing.
Does that take care of our fines?
That's a different issue, the fines, the fines are on the wastewater side. So that, that one I haven't heard from the EPA yet and I haven't asked them any questions, but I need to follow up on that. The housing element has been making great progress as it comes before you tonight. We do have a, a little bit of a hiccup, we're not going to be able to adopt the housing element tonight, so we'll treat tonight as a workshop on the housing element and request that a special meeting be scheduled on October 8th and we can get into more detail about that when it comes up on the agenda. We have several ordinance revisions coming to the council soon. Planning commission appointments is one of them that the city attorney has drafted. Airbnb, changing the transit orient tax for short-term rentals to send that 12 and a half percent tax to Airbnb and other short-term rental types. And then the cannabis rules need to come forward so we can finish up our cannabis process that we started. And with that, that's, that's it, my report, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Do we have any questions from the public, no?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Oops, alright, alright, thank you. Strategic Plan Committee report?
Where is Mr. Kennedy? I wasn't, I, I, we did have a meeting, when was it? Let me look on my calendar here.
September 5th?
Yeah, I think so. We had a meeting September 5th and we, you were there, weren't you, Don?
I was.
Yeah.
I don't want to steal your thunder, council member.
No, no, you, you go ahead and give it because I'm, I'm not ready. I probably forgot what they all said, so.
Well, for me, it was a nice overview. The committee took time to introduce me to the whole process, it's the first meeting I was able to attend. We had five people volunteer to be on the strategic committee that night, so that's really positive. So Mandela, the chair of that committee, took names and phone numbers and got the. Oh, Mandeza, I'm sorry, Mendel, I'm thinking.
Well, she does a Mandela's, but it's Mandeza.
Another superhero activist, I'm sorry. Thank you, I'm sorry, I butchered your name. I, I did spend time with Jennifer and Mandeza on separate occasions reviewing the, the draft of the Park's master plan. They've done a great job and put together about a 15-page document and, and I'm working with a consultant, hopefully to get a grant to update that with the trails and walking, walking trails and bicycle path as well. So we're going to bring that forward when we're ready and we've had some good meetings, closing up some, some loose ends and putting some narratives together for that, so congratulations to the strategic committee for that.
Yeah, I just want to say, they've worked long and hard on that for all, for, that's about a year and a half's volunteer work, so that's, that's a big thing. I mean, I know that you come from a much bigger city, Salinas, and you'd just write a check to somebody and it'd be done.
In 18 months.
Well, hopefully quicker than 18 months, but, but it's, it was a big lift for those people.
And they did a great job.
And they need it, congratulations, so, or an attaboy.
Yeah.
Or attagirl.
Attagirl, that's right.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, that it? Now we go to items five, public hearing items. You adopt the draft 2015, 2019 housing element.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, you skipped a couple things.
I did? Where, where?
4E.
No. Oh, yes, I did, yes, I did. Report from city council appointees to regional organizations and committees.
I guess I start, right, since I've mentioned it?
Yes.
Okay. So we had, I had a lot of meetings this month, Monterey Bay Community Power, AMBAG, and the Intergovernmental Committee, which both the city manager and I attended. So on Monterey Bay Power, September 4th, we had our policy board meeting and we voted to expand into, we had already voted to expand into, not Moss Landing, what's that, Moro Bay, because with a M. Moro Bay and the City of San Luis Obispo. So now we voted to include Rover Beach, Pismo Beach, Paso Robles, and the Royal Grandin. And we're also including in the next county down, which would be Santa Barbara County, if we're keeping track, the Cities of Santa Maria, Santa Barbara County, City of Guadalupe, City of Galita, and the City of Carpinteria. They're all joining Monterey Bay Community Power, so I will say probably eventually we'll have a name change. Because it's no longer Monterey Bay. But we're trying to get, there's an organization of, of, of community choice aggregators, of which Monterey Bay is one of many and we're trying to get it all the way from the Oregon border down to the Mexican border. San Diego is voting tonight, hopefully, to form their own CCA. It's easier for them because they are a single jurisdiction, one big city, as you know, of about 3 million people, I think. The City of San Jose, which is smaller, it's only about 1.2 million people, also voted, voted to make a CCA last year. The PUC and its infinite wisdom, I'm saying that sarcastically for anybody who's confused, has made it much harder for smaller places to form a community choice aggregator, which is why all those cities are trying, are, we didn't pursue them, they asked to join. I found out at, at the meeting that most of these cities, like San Luis Obispo and, and Santa Maria and, not the county of Santa Barbara, they all have these departments underneath the city manager called a Department of Sustainability and these are, you know, people who spend their careers working on, on environmental issues and making each, each of their cities more sustainable. And a very, very, very large part of their job is to get clean power and that's what we offer at Monterey Bay Power, so that's why they really want to join. It makes, it checks off a lot of boxes on their to-do list. So, but there is really other good news coming out of Monterey Bay Power. Last year, you might know that the rebate for your electric bill on the generation charges only, I know this gets confusing, we don't count gas, Monterey Bay Power does not do gas, so you throw that out and then we don't run the grid, PG&E still runs the grid, so there's two sections, the power generation side and the grid running side. On the power generation side, that's what Monterey Bay Power does, we gave a 3% rebate off of PG&E rates. This year, 2019, that's going to grow to 5%. Next year, 2020, two things are going to happen. It's going to grow to 7% and then we're going to decouple our rates. Right now, our rates are tied to PG&E, they're the same, and then we give a discount, or the rebate. We're going to decouple our rate structure from PG&E and have our own rate structure, which might, you know, everything's speculative, it's in the future. What might give us up to 10% cheaper than PG&E power and still be CO2-free. So that's, that's the news out of Monterey Bay Power. I would say it's darn good news to your pocketbooks, you're going to save a little bit of money. AMBAG is now in the process of implementing the sixth round of regional housing needs allocation. We're going to be talking about the fourth, so, yeah, we're behind. And they're, they're gearing up to be the financial agent for all the COGS in the area. And so that means they'll be doling out the money to the San Benito cog, which will then dole out the money to us for the plant, for the planning grants to do the, to do the planning. And then, so we had an intergovernmental meeting, the intergovernmental meeting, we mostly discussed planning in schools, the Hollister School District states they need a 20-acre site for every, I guess it's, what was it, 1,200 homes, Don, or something like that?
Something like that.
Yeah.
I had to ship them and they.
So they, they need a 20-acre school site for every 1,200 homes, you know. I get bored with that discussion and I say, work it out yourselves. And then so, good evening to Monterey Bay Seater University, okay, I know they're walking in. And then we talked about recology a little bit because they made a promise to all of us that they were going to use compressed natural gas for their trucks and they're still using diesel, they're using quote-unquote biodiesel. But I'm going to suggest to you that even if it's biodiesel, diesel trucks still emit something called PM10s and PM2.5s, that stands for particle matter, and the 2.5 or the 10 stands for microns and that stuff can get stuck in your lungs and cause problems. So I would prefer the compressed natural gas, eventually they'll be transferring over to, to electric, that's it.
Thank you. Any comments?
I don't have any.
You don't have a report? You have any? Well, I have a, COGS, we're still dealing with the, the roundabout at 25 and 156. Unfortunately, a good friend of mine got killed there last week. So there's, there's a major problem happening there, you know, so that's what we're dealing with right now. With the LAFCO, there's some annexation of some property, part of a, of a building program they got going over there, so that's about it. Not, not, and I have meetings this week, so next month I'll have a full redetail as to where we are. But we keep pushing those, you know, those issues forward, instead of dealing with them, we keep pushing them forward. So it gets pretty, you know, pretty tiresome sometimes. Anyway, there's no more, no more reports for the appointees. Now we'll go back to A and bringing the substantial, Sustainable City Year Program to San Juan Bautista. Professor Daniel Fernandez, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Good, step up to the podium, please.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So as we have introduction, while Professor Fernandez gets ready, I was fortunate with the City of Salinas Public Works Department to work directly when the program first began and he had students work on several projects for us and they all are, are based on just better sustainable practices or best management practices in the sustainable arena. We interviewed Hartnell College students, for example, about bike trails and, and if they would ride their bikes to campus if we, if we provided better bike facilities, that's just an example. I was really impressed with his class when they went through the whole campus and, and got rid of single-use plastics and, and recycling and composting and got the whole campus up to a sustainable scale. And, you know, if you think about it, CHMB's campus is, I think, 10,000 students, imagine what they could do for us. So we collect a fee, AB 939 recycling fee, when our residents pay their trash bill and that purpose of that fee is to reduce litter in the city. And so Dan and I got together and thought it would be interesting to see if his students would be able to help us with our single-use plastic ordinance and implementing that and we could use those special funds to pay for a professor to be in our city, so with that, Dan?
Thank you, thank you, and I'm happy to be here, thank you for having us today. And I just want to acknowledge the students in my class, maybe you could. Saw Salina earlier today, too, so. My students who aren't standing up could stand up, just so you see the number of us who are great.
Awesome, thank you for coming.
Help me group, so.
Where, where, what regions are you from, what cities are you from, what do you represent?
I'm from SoCal, originally, come up here.
Okay, anybody else?
San Jose.
San Jose. I'd just like to know where all of you are from because, you know, it brings us together.
Yeah, definitely.
And do you get extra credit for being here tonight? No?
I don't get credit for you.
We've worked it out.
Nothing extra.
They're starting to learn to enjoy city council meetings, it's really a good thing.
Well, thank you for being here.
Yeah.
So, I have a little presentation I prepared, which I'll go through relatively quickly. And I, I, I will send a revised version to you. I revised it a little bit from the one I sent the other day, so you can see what we're up to. And what, just to give you a context for what we're about. First of all, I was married, I had my reception here in, at Hardines, 28 years ago. Yeah. In 1991, thank you, and we're still married. So, anyway, I wanted to point that out, that I, I, my history with San Juan Baptista goes back longer than you might think. So, I'm very happy to be here, longer than my history with CSU MB, because this was even before the university was formed. And going on that point, we were founded in 94, and we had our first students in 1995. And I started in 1996. Now, as far as what we're doing, this class that I, with this project that I have running in this class is part of a national network that's doing the same thing in multiple cities across the country, actually internationally. There's universities in Brazil doing this, there's several in Africa doing this, there's one in Israel doing this, and, and there's others that are looking at starting it. The idea is that we part, that university partners with local municipality, which is often a city. Because cities often have needs that, not just San Juan Baptista, every city. There's things you want to do that you just don't have the staff to do. Much as you want to, the best of intentions are there. And the universities have a lot of students who want to do. They want to do things for the city, they want to make a difference in their communities. And so, they're a resource, and you have faculty like me who can kind of help facilitate things, and we're supposed to know a thing or two, that's why we got where we're at. But we always have things to learn, too. So, the idea is that we put these two together and have the needs of the city addressed by projects that are done by classes led by faculty, so that in a given year, there may be several projects that are aimed towards the needs of the city to help it become more sustainable, to give our students experiences, and to help the city out at the same time. And it's basically win-win. That's been our experience at most of the projects at the universities that are taking place across the country. And there's over 30 different schools across the country with this model, and that's growing. And typically, the partnerships last for a year or two with the city of Salinas, that's where Don and I worked together. We, we were partnering with Salinas for two years. Then we partnered with the city of Seaside, which is our neighbor, for, for two years. And we had, I think, 17 classes with Salinas, 11 with Seaside, something like that, across the, across the campus. I taught one or two of them, but there's other faculty who were involved also. And this year, I'll say, we're also partnering with Pacific Grove, so I'm actually splitting, because, for a variety of reasons. But we're, I'm hoping to work with both cities, both San Juan Baptista and Pacific Grove. Very different cities, but sometimes there's commonalities. I've been talking about why I would do this. It's engaging. It's engaging. For the city staff, why would you want to do this? City staff, I know for me, I've been a professor 24 years now, it keeps me young, I love working with students. Their creativity, their questions, they keep me engaged. And I think for a lot of city staff, it's kind of, the, the excitement is contagious. And they get engaged in projects in ways that they may, maybe hadn't been before. Students really bring a new element of creativity to these kinds of projects. They can float ideas that could be considered that city staff might not be able to float, because of politics, for political reasons. Students can actually bring things forward that might be of interest, that wouldn't otherwise be considered. And maybe they, maybe they still, still won't be considered, but, but they can at least be considered and, or thought about and brought forward. And it fosters collaboration between university and city staff. One of the things I know is an issue in many cities is that a lot of people are retiring, a lot of city staff are retiring. And they're trying to figure out where our replacement's going to come from. And a lot of university students are looking for jobs after they finish their degrees. And what we're seeing is that by doing this kind of project where students get to work with city staff, some of the students decide, hey, I want to work in city government, or I see there's a lot of potential there. And I've had several, whether they're internships or, or employment, go into the city government and get up, get jobs. And the city staff knew them, so they kind of, they fit right in. And I summarized this already, we've been going since 2015, so we're, we're just beginning our fifth year of partnership with some city through this program. CSU MB is also very strong in service learning that you may have heard of. This is not service learning, but we have a lot of commonalities with that program, that all of our students on campus have to go through. They have to do service learning in their communities. This is, I'd say, a more focused effort on specific projects where a whole class is engaged in some aspect of a city. Service learning, they're spread out amongst many different partners. I sent a file that has a list of 65 different projects that our students have been involved with, with the last two city partners. It's just the titles, I'm happy to send you the abstracts, and I'm even happy to send you the reports. But I wanted to start with something that's digestible. And so, you can look at the project titles and say, hey, that's interesting, you know, we would like to see more of that. I'm happy to send anything I can to you, to see the kind of work that we've done. And I'll just give you some quick examples. We attended, we attend every city council meeting during the fall semester with my class, that's part of what we do. This is two different years in the city of Seaside, there we are, city council. My students presenting in front of the Seaside City Council. And there's the last two falls, I had only seven students a couple of years ago. Lasts, a year ago, I had 22 students on five projects, all within the same class. This year, I have 27 students. So, I probably have five, six projects just within my own class, related to the city. And here's some examples of projects, I, I won't belabor them. We did a linear park in the city of Seaside, students designed that, because there's this area that they can't develop on, because there's a, there's a power line right above it. Well, let's, let's design a park, so that's what my students did. And they got surveys, and they actually surveyed the community, which is another thing students can do. They can find out what the community's interested, would they be interested in something like this? That's the kind of bandwidth that having classes like this could offer. They also helped redesign Fremont Boulevard in Seaside, if you've ever been there, it's very blighted, it's big. And they redesigned Broadway very nicely. Fremont's going to be, hopefully, eventually on their list, and my students came up with a plan for that. They did a fruit harvest assessment, and they did a GPS location of every fruit tree they could find in parts of the city of Seaside, and surveyed people as, as to whether they'd be interested in doing a fruit sharing program. If they have too much fruit, would you be willing to share it? Would you be going to plant fruit in, in the city in different places, fruit trees, for people to enjoy? Make the city a nicer place and provide food for people, too. And these are the locations they came up with, and all the fruits that they surveyed, I couldn't believe, I hadn't even heard of some of these fruits that they found. There was a group that looked at food waste, trying to reduce food waste, and do educational campaigns for how to compost, how to recycle. And I know that the city of San Benito, I'm sorry, the county of San Benito's, and, is looking at doing similar things, and could be a partner along with San Juan Baptista to help our students. They have some resources that could be helpful to, to allow our students to do the work to help you. They could help us help you. Students developed a plant, a bilingual plant guide for plants in the area of Seaside, city of Seaside. And in fall 2017, this one's great, city of Seaside is building a big project right next to the university, and very few people in the university even knew it was happening. I think our president knew, and a few others, I certainly hope so. But a lot of staff didn't know, most of the students didn't know. And so, my students, two years ago, created charrettes, where they actually had people from the city and people from the campus come together and talk about what would make a better community right, to be developed right near campus. And some of the design changes came about as a result of the input gathered by my students. Like, oh, you ought to have a, a center here, not over here, but over here, would make more sense in relation to the campus. So, we were able to provide that input.
Was it implemented?
It's being, it's being built right now.
It is?
Yeah, it's in the process of being built now.
Your designs that you cannot let?
I, I wouldn't say that there are designs, but we influence the designs, the class influenced them, so, yeah. And we've received a number of different awards and media attention. The young woman on the left is being interviewed by, looks like a witch, but she was, the reporter was dressed up because it was Halloween two years ago. And that was when the charrette took place, so that's the interview. And she made it on TV, it was great. We won a best practice award, that's in the middle picture, at the California Higher Education Sustainability Conference, for, for this project, for this Sustainable City Year Program that we started on campus. And other students have won other awards as well that are all listed here. So, what about San Juan Baptista? What can we do here? Well, a portion of my class is going to be with PG, and a portion of my classes is hoping to work with you. And they've already been talking about project ideas as a result of some communications, both with Don Reynolds and with the folks at Recology, Salina and others. And so, some of the ideas are involved, and also, a colleague of mine in the College of Business is interested in having his class do some projects here on helping businesses achieve greener levels of, of operation. See, here's some of the ideas that have been discussed, I know there's the idea of a single-use plastic ordinance, let's try to get rid of the things that you use once and throw away. They're increasing our landfills, they're wasteful, we can do better than that, I know we can. And this is a great place to work on that, too. Recycling education, my students are, they're in schools all the time. They've done great jobs in other years, creating brochures and informational materials that they're happy to share with schools or with communities. And there's a variety of projects that we've been discussing with San Benito Integrated Waste, but these are, this, they're of this nature, of trying to reduce the, the amount of material going into the landfill. And as I mentioned, also helping businesses become greener. So, what do we need? One of the things we'll need is, is staff support. I'm, I'm a professor, that's, that's great, but I don't know San Juan Baptista that well, even though I was married, you know, even though I had my reception here. I don't know the city as well as you do, I don't know all the things that happen in the city. I can't lead my students in projects without help from somebody who knows the city. And I know you're tight on staff time, but it, it takes some staff time, but it's not like having an intern. It's a very different kind of arrangement. And this is something, something that I think Recology could help with as well, or the San Benito, folks from San Benito County, who are also working on such efforts, could be, could provide that middle role, I think. Depending on how much staff time you have available, Don, I'll talk to you. And we also require a small budget, because we do have expenses in order to be part of this program, and I list what some of them are, on the order of $5,000 per class. And faculty that participate, I like to give them some compensation, because it takes more of their time than it would, than just teaching a class. They have to do some organizing, organizing and collaborating outside of their normal activities. We're part of an EPICN, that's the Educational Partnerships for Innovation in Communities Network. That's what EPICN stands for, that is the national network of this, or international network of projects like this. They are, they, they offer support to all of the campuses, they've provided immense support to me already. And they're just starting to charge a fee to be part of it. So, it's another expense. So, there's a few expenses like that, it's relatively modest. I know up in Oregon, they have a budget, University of Oregon, where the whole thing started, their university, their budget for the program that I have started here, our sister program, is $250,000 a year. I'm like, that's not what I'm doing. I'm much smaller than that, and I like it, I can be more nimble that way, and more flexible. And that is my presentation, and I really appreciate your time and attention. And I'm happy to answer questions at any point that is appropriate for you, now or later.
So, Dan, what I noticed was Recology has a lot of PR materials. And I shared a video with the council about a small village that implemented a single-use ban on plastic. And, and what is a single-use, what is the definition? There's a lot of information that needs to go out. And then, we talked about phasing it over time, and we talked about the impact on special events versus the, the restaurants and, and the retail. And so, it sounded like that would be a good partnership, and that's, that was the first thing I thought of when I thought of your project.
Mm-hmm. I, I could definitely see events like that. Students are great people to have at events. They're, in my experience, they want to communicate, they have the information, they're eager, enthusiastic. And whether it's events or even talking to businesses, which are not events, but kind of an ongoing.
Or surveys or concerns, or, or just, just having conversations with business owners?
Exactly. And that's been really successful in many projects that are in the packet that I sent you all.
Great, okay. Any other ideas or questions, council?
No, I'm good.
I have a few.
Yeah, please.
First of all, the single-use plastics ban, that's my baby, I introduced that here a number of months ago.
Congratulations, I think that's a great idea.
As you, as you pointed out in your presentation, there is just no need for anything relative to the cost to our environment. Plastic is a substance that the earth cannot digest, and it stays forever. So, why? You can't get rid of all of it, and the city of San Juan Baptista isn't the city of San Jose, or Salinas, or LA. But we can at least do our part, so I'm just very passionate about that topic, and I thank you for picking up the flag. The second question I had is you, when you're articulating the needs, you said staff time and a budget, right? As far as staff time, what does that look like? Like, for example, I would, I don't know, I would be considered staff, but I would gladly volunteer. I've lived here all my adult life, you said you need someone to show you around San Juan Baptista, I will do that. But I don't know if, if what Don is thinking about in terms of actual staff time, or what that involves. But I'm sure we could fulfill that need.
Okay.
The second thing, budget, you said $5,000 per class, is that right?
Yeah.
How long is a class?
A class is a semester.
So, what's that, six months? Five, four?
Four months, yeah, we've already started our semester, so we're in the midst of it now. And it's, there is some wiggle room, it's not like a, you know, I, I have some room for wiggling. I need to make my, I need to basically cover my expenses for running the program. But that's kind of an approximate number, about $5,000. And we also, some classes are partly this sema, this semester and next semester. I can make things work, I can be flexible, that's a roundabout figure. That I wanted to throw out there.
But it would be a budgetary request to us to fund this, these guys helping us?
Right.
To the tune of about $5,000 for four, five months?
We would come back with an agree, with an agreement.
So, the franchise fee that Recology pays to both the, the city Hollister, city San Juan, and the county, is that in a separate, for lack of a better word, lockbox fund that we kind of keep in the way?
Exactly, it, it has to be used for reducing litter in our community, and right now, there's about a $45,000 balance. And we don't have very much of it budgeted, so if we could increase awareness of this kind, then we would be reducing litter. And I've already talked to Recology about, and, and they said certainly this program would be eligible for that. So, it's not general fund, it's not general fund?
So, we could take the 5,000, approximately $5,000 out of that franchise fee fund and use it to fund this?
Exactly.
This class.
Exactly.
Why would you not do that?
We need a resolution.
So, so we would bring, we would bring one or, or maybe more than one contract?
We have the potential for one and a half classes this semester, let's say, between my class and the business class, and then at least another one, one and a half next semester.
So.
So, you said business class. Now, I met the dean of the, of the business school down there.
Shawn Camuth.
Yes, really enthusiastic gentleman. Would that be the guy, or?
No, he, he's, he'd be more expensive.
More expensive than Dan, maybe, too.
He's more fancy.
Yeah. The person would be somebody like me, a faculty member.
Okay.
But he reports to Dean Camuth.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Or who reports to the person who reports to Dean Camuth. But he, he's a faculty member who's worked with me both on, on city of Salinas. As a matter of fact, his students won that award for their development of, their project to develop farmworker housing on, on farms in the Salinas area.
Because when I met with him, he brought in, I would call him a colleague, or adjunct professor, I guess, for lack of a better word. I don't know your terminology down there. But he was in the hospitality area, he'd run Marriott's and all.
John Avella.
Yeah, I guess so. I'm trying to remember.
Yeah. Shorter guy with?
Yeah, yeah, and so, I was, we're big on hospitality here with our Hardines and Donas and Naca and all, and the Posada. So, I was thinking, is that the person you're thinking of? No?
It's, it's not, John actually doesn't teach, he runs the hospitality program. There are some hospitality faculty who are interested in sustainability. The one, the ones I talked to are a little concerned about the distance for them, as far as coming here regularly. But this other faculty member, he's not hospitality, he's entrepreneurship. So, he's more about the business, the business side of, of, not necessarily hospitality, but any business, greening businesses is, is what he is involved with. And he's worked really well with me on, on the other cities. I will still work on the hospitality folks, because I know them all, and we work closely with them.
And we're big on, that's our biggest industry.
Right.
By far, so, you know. And we're big on, that's our biggest industry by far, so you know, that's who we are.
Right. And so I'll, I'll keep working on them, too.
Okay.
Because you never know what might come out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So question, I have a question. In order for us to approve that, it has to be agendized?
Right. We have to negotiate a contract and come to an agreement, and then we'll bring it back. So this is just a form of introduction for the city council tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we instruct city staff to prepare such a, an effort to get these guys going.
Do it.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion?
I can't talk.
And there was no action required on this item. It was just, it was just a presentation, so.
No, but based on the presentation, I think we should go forward and make a motion that we do go forward and take the next step.
The only thing I would add to that would be that we use the Recology franchise fee fund to make sure that it's coming out of that budget.
And meanwhile, to our good professor and all the students, thank you guys for being here. Thank you guys for caring about your community, and this is the way you do it. This is the way you do it. Leveraging what community needs against educational institutions, all that stuff. This is absolutely wonderful. I could not be more happy that you guys are here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have, we have a motion on the floor, and there's no discussion. We'll call for the question. All in favor respond by aye.
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 Post. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will be in touch. We'll, we'll probably...
You'll have to.
Well, part of what, 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 part of what we do is, in our class, I'll just say is, we try to get a sense of place. That's something my students are learning about. So I told them we'll stay at least till the end of the class time, or at least those of us who can will stay till 10 to 8, which is when class ends.
It's depending upon how.
Or sooner.
We may be done by then.
Hey, you'll be surprised. Fuck fast.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Now we go to our public hearing item. The first one is the adopted draft of housing element, which we will not do tonight, but we are going to have a workshop, correct?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, members of the city council. Upon review and advice from our consultant legal staff, we should have noticed this differently and made it clear. When the planning commission took a hold of this, we had a really good, I would say 90-minute conversation about six items. And the six items are on the back of the second page of my staff report. And it talks about the first item being the sequoia review, and then summarized as a reasonable accommodations ordinance to make sure that we have a process for persons seeking affordable housing are accommodated for special needs. Reserving sewer and water utilities for housing first in case we were short on water in a drought situation, for example, that it would be reserved for a housing project above all others, affordable housing project. Zoning ordinance text amendments, which were summarized in the, in the documents distributed to the planning commission and to the council a month ago. And then general plan rezone of one of three properties. And then, of course, the approval of the document itself. I am targeting a grant that is due October 11th, and it's a Caltrans grant to help us with some of this community share and planning activities. And they will not accept our grant unless our housing element has been adopted. So it's up to approximately $200,000 opportunity. And so what I was trying to do was to bring just the housing element forward, because the ordinances cannot be approved at a special meeting. So if we could bring the housing element forward today, that would have worked great. And my oversight was that the SEQUA document included all six items. And I'm just, and I just wanted to bring, so I goofed. I'll be honest with you. I'll take the, the hit for that. So not, not a loss. With the council, we would like to, we'd like you to consider a special meeting so that we can notice things properly, extract the housing element itself from the SEQUA document so that it stands on its own. And then we can come back and, to the planning commission October 1st with the ordinances, which they've already approved all but one, and I'll touch base on the one. And then, and then back to the council for approval at the October meeting, which of course occurs on the 18th after the 11th occurs. So that's the sequence of events that have unfolded. At our planning commission meeting, the, the item that got the most attention was the rezoning of the properties. We had, there's a map in the document that talks about properties A, B, and C. And the planning commission concluded to remove further consideration of rezoning for higher-density housing of the Lang Street parcel, but was focused more on properties on McCallum Street, the Manning properties, both across from Valero and next to Valero. At that time, the chair actually brought forward the idea of the property next to that with the historic house on it. And I believe the owner is here. The goal is to go from an R1 zoning or a mixed-use R1 zoning to an R3 zoning. So there's actually three, three options the council would have, and the planning commission weighed all three as well. And that is to rezon, that's the most assertive measure. The city has the authority to rezon property. The second is to rezon it as a mixed-use with an R3, a higher-density housing component. And then the third step that the council could take in lieu of not, either, neither of those would be an overlay, an R3 overlay. But that's the most problematic because if the owner then chose to develop just a commercial use, for example, of their property under the existing zoning, then the city would be stuck finding a new parcel again. We'd have to identify a new acre for R3 higher-density zoning. I spoke with the property owner that the chair had recommended we talk to at 70 McCallum Street, and he seemed to be in favor of the rezoning to just residential. And he's got plans that he's been working on, and he's, he sounded willing, I'll let him speak for himself, because he's here tonight, Mr. Cohen. So with that, Richard is here from EMC, and he has a few slides to share with you, and we'll just run through them real quick. And because we're unable to take action on the SEQUA part of this tonight, he's just going to give you a quick overview of what the housing element is, and then the folks can come and speak and then share with the council with their thoughts on this matter. Richard James from EMC.
Don.
Yes, questions? If we'll get set up.
Through the man. Well, Richard's setting up. Can I ask you a couple of questions from what you just said? So you said three options, rezon, mixed-use, and an R3 overlay, right?
Mm-hmm. Any of those three options on one parcel would satisfy the state's requirement for having property dense enough to, to put up affordable housing in a high enough density, right? 24 units an acre is an R3.
24 units an acre? Is that, that's the maximum, right?
That's the maximum.
And the minimum would be like...
20.
Yeah, okay.
Is it 20? 20? Thank you, thank you. I should let Richard talk to this.
Okay.
And then the R1 where we are now is between 8 and 15, I believe, units an acre. So when you have, we're talking about a small property, a tenth of an acre, like a property on Third Street downtown, that's like 1.35 units.
Right.
So even though it's zoned mixed-use, it's like, how do you build a third of a unit? Anyway, so it gets complicated because it's not very dense.
Looks like Richard's still looking for the files. Let me ask one other question, because in the interest of full disclosure, I had a meeting with the city manager the other day, and I was asking, okay, well, how many units do we need to appease the Sacramento gods to lay our, our fruit at their feet? And you said, I think, 16 units?
16 units.
Sweet.
16 affordable units.
16 affordable units. We're not talking about a whole lot in terms of what we need to find.
I'm, I'm, I'm just asking this kind of rhetorically, but also informationally. So we have a lot of new units going in of both Copperleaf and Rancho Vista, but they are market rate and not affordable, at least under the classifications I've read. So they're not going to count on that number at all.
I don't think so.
How about the ADUs?
And the city attorney and I went back and forth on this at the time. I don't think any of the secondary units were deed restricted to be affordable, correct? So they don't count?
I don't think they were.
Not that I'm aware of.
So those two housing developments get us nowhere in our quest for compliance.
Well, for clarification, the RHNA, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment asks for 47 units, and a lot of those are market rate. 17, I believe, are, are a market rate.
So it does help there.
Yeah, it does satisfy the market rate, of course. But yes, it's estimated in the housing element, I believe the family would have to earn $194,000.
Right, I saw that. And, you know, I couldn't afford that. If I didn't have a home to sell and have a substantial, there's no way I could put 10% down and make the payment of $300, $400 a month. That would, you know, it'd take more than 50% of my whatever.
But the deed restriction is important because it maintains the integrity of the affordable nature of it.
Right, I understand that.
All right.
Go, go.
Am I on?
You're on.
Okay, Richard with EMC Planning Group, consultant to the city on the housing element. Just a little quick general background, probably more for the benefit of some of the audience members than the council members, but every city in the state of California is required to have a general plan amongst the elements of the general plan that are required is a housing element. And unlike most elements in the general plan, the housing element is pretty heavily mandated from the state. And so a lot of what we're talking about tonight are mandates that have come down in legislation over the last couple of years.
But this is the fifth cycle, correct?
This is the fifth cycle. The fourth cycle was certified and enforced for a short time.
And we are behind.
Yes. I've got a slide that kind of covers that. We can skip over tonight's actions. So here we go, the status of the city's housing element. The last update was due, the current one that we're working on was due in 2015. So it's behind schedule. Recent legislation by the state of California mandates a penalty now, when there used to be no penalty for being late. The penalty now is that instead of an eight-year cycle on your housing element, the validity period for your housing element, it's now going down to a pair of four-year housing elements if you're late. So there is an effective penalty when you don't get your housing element done on time. So due to a missed deadline on the, in 2015, San Juan Batista is now on that four-year cycle. If the city is able to complete the 2015 update right now and complete a second one by the end of the year, are we still looking at that being feasible? I hope so. We've already held our second community workshop. Then we'll be back to the second, back to the eight-year cycle starting in 2023, when the next one that would, would be adopted in December is expired. So the process to date, there were community meetings held in February and in August. The California Department of Housing and Community Development reviewed a draft of the housing element in May. Part of that state oversight and mandate is that they actually review your element before they let you go and approve it, so before it gets to your desk. The public draft housing element was finished in July, and a public review SEQUA document, which was a mitigated negative declaration, was circulated for public review in August. And then just recently, September 3rd, the planning commission met and considered and made recommendations on the housing element. So one of the major issues that the city needs to meet is the need for an additional bit of low-income housing. It's discussed, we're 16 units short based on zoning, what the city zoning can accommodate. So we look at vacant sites or underutilized sites. The state does not like you looking at underutilized sites. You have to do a lot of proving if you've already got something substandard on a site. So we look primarily, like to focus on vacant sites. And we need a site that will accommodate 16 lower-income units. Default density of about 20 units per acre is considered to accommodate low-income housing. So when you, when you rezon a piece of property to R3, which has a 20-unit-per-acre density allowance, then you've satisfied that. State's also tightened up, though, and they now require special conditions on that rezoned parcel to keep it in that zoning and that, at a minimum density of 20 over about a five or six-year period. So the city, oh, the housing element that was prepared and circulated the draft identified three sites. I think Don pretty much touched on this. There were A, B, and C as identified. Go to the next slide. Site A is there, site B there, and site C. Site C was dismissed by the planning commission for various reasons. There was some, some concern during one of the public community meetings that that was not the best site. I believe site B, city preferred to keep that planning commission in commercial because of its exposure to the highway primarily. And then site A was considered the best of those three sites. But the planning commission also came up with a fourth site. The housing element does not discuss a fourth site, and it doesn't have any allowance for other sites to be... Question, Dan?
Yeah, yeah, Richard. So site B, you said, was dismissed by the planning commission because they have preference for commercial. But if one of the options that was laid out is mixed-use, that would be commercial with residential on top.
Mm-hmm.
So could not be consistent with site B.
Potentially. If it can meet that 20-unit-per-acre residential density, or, or if it can be, it could also, as an alternative, because you're actually putting something on the ground, you could approve a project that was deed restricted, affordable. And that would satisfy the requirement, too.
Okay. So site B is not out of the running?
Actually, the planning commission makes recommendations, and none of the sites are out of the running, but I think the planning commission was pretty strongly feeling that C was not a good site.
C or B?
C.
C.
C. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you're responding to the same, like nothing's out of the running.
Between, between A and B...
I'm, I'm, I'm interested in site B. And site B is still on the table, right? If we do mixed-use?
I would say it is. And there's a fourth site that planning commission identified.
And that's what you're getting to, so I don't have to.
Yeah, and so what we're going to propose is we put a very small additional line into the housing element itself and reflect that in the environmental document that allows for the city to select a site that's not one of these three if it meets the same goals and same, same intent of the program.
Okay.
And so that's a minor text issue. It'll, of course, be post-state review, but they'd make a final review after the city council adopts the housing element anyway to certify it. So, and I don't think they'll have an issue with it.
So would we have to go and find another site? Or what do you mean by the line? A line?
Oh, a sentence, a sentence. A sentence in the housing element document that, that allows a little opening for us to add or subtract if a new candidate were to come to our attention.
But we don't have another one if we don't use C.
Right.
Well, for, so we don't need three. We need to pick one. So we just need to pick one, and these were options.
Okay.
And so by ruling out C, we can pick A or B.
A or B.
Or perhaps a different parcel.
So the potential fourth site, we could label D.
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 Right.
And we don't know, we have not identified a physical location yet. We're just referring to it in the housing element as a...
An alternative.
Yeah, alternative potential site.
Well, the, the planning commission did suggest 70 McCallum, which is right across the street from A.
Right across the street from A.
Where the historic house is.
Oh, okay.
And there may be some interest. Contrary to parcel B, in speaking with the owner of parcel B, she was not interested. She would prefer that her property stay zoned as it is.
Commercial.[1689.62]
In which case, uh, zoning overlay for R one may be an option to appease the state and, and also the owner. Because we don't want to, if we don't have to, uh, work in contradiction to the owner's wishes. I mean, after all, it's their property to develop. So we may have better success with, uh, option D, as we're talking.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, um, council member Freeman asked where option D is located, do we know that?
Yeah, it's right next to it. The word, uh, yeah, the-
The Chalmers' house, alright?
Yes.
The Chalmers' house?
Yes.
Okay. That could be our option D.
Right.
Okay.
So, and that's, that's what we're bringing back to the planning commission. They've approved everything, but, but which parcel we'd like to recommend for higher zoning. So the, the October one discussion will be limited to just that question.
Okay.
Yeah, and the intent of adding a line to the housing element, simply to document in the housing element that there's this flexibility for the city council to make a different choice than those three.
Right.
So it basically opens up your options a little bit. You know, and we could go, you could go ahead with a different parcel without putting it in the housing element, but since the housing element is still up for approval, there's no reason not to just add a simple line and kind of bless it at this stage.
And that will pass?
It should.
Pass there with Sacramento?
I don't think they'll have a problem, especially since you're gonna probably-
If we say a piece of property to be determined later.
Yeah.
That, that would be a problem, that would be a problem.
Literally a problem, because planning commission will have already acted on it, I think.
Oh, okay.
With their recommendations, it'll be in process. And by the time HCD in Sacramento actually opens up the envelope and starts reading what you approved, you may have already acted on that parcel, it'll be a done deal.
Oh, so we do have to determine a parcel?
Yeah.
Before this thing gets submitted to SAC?
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to do a number of different actions and there's some other different, you know, changes to the city's ordinances that we need to take care of because some of them are quote, "do immediately" for the statutes.
Right.
And-
Per the, per the state?
Yeah.
The state is recommending that we do it immediately?
Yeah, the state wants to see them done immediately. So that's a, a couple of these that are in there. Some of these are, some of the other ordinance are just cleanup items and minor things. But there's a few things, I think emergency shelters in a public facility zone is one. The state is gonna say, "Did you do it or didn't you?" And your s- your housing element will basically be in kind of a certified but not certified mode until you do it. So there's a few where they've got a pretty heavy hand. And so we wanted to do is clean those up immediately, right, with the adoption of this housing element? Because we want to turn around and do the second four-year cycle immediately after, hopefully, um, adopting that by the end of December. And one of the pieces-
Nineteen?
Yeah.
Wow.
And one of the, because that'll put you on time.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a push, but I think we can, hopefully, we can make it. They've been very supportive in Sacramento through this process. And I think if we explain to them that, you know, they've got a certain, I think it's a sixty or ninety-day review period on the draft, or maybe it's forty-five, and they've got this review period built into law, I think they will probably accommodate a shorter review if we explain, "We really want this done." Because they've got some jurisdictions who are basically kind of thumbing their nose at them. And the jurisdictions that are happy to do, bend over backwards and get their work, their elements adopted, they're really being helpful.
Okay.
So I'm hopeful that we can work with them and get it done that fast. Would it, maybe they'd even give us an extension or something, I don't know. I don't know, I wouldn't bet on that.
So, and, and we spoke to them just ten days ago. We had HCD on the phone and we had EMC and, and we talked about this same strategy.
And so far, so good.
So far, so good.
Yeah.
Do you students out there know what's going on right now? Probably not so much, huh?
Yeah.
It's confusing, this is, yeah.
This is convoluted politics. But let me, let me say it as plainly as I can, because I've been dealing with this stuff all of my adult life, thirty years. Is that the state of California tells each community, "You have responsibility to provide some type of affordable housing. You have to carry your share." And for some communities, it's easy, other communities, it's difficult. But we're, the community of San Juan Batista is no different. And the, and state of California is saying, "You guys have to carry your burden. You have to carry your share. How are you doing that?" And if we said, "Ah, we don't want to do it," they say, "Okay, fine, we're not gonna give you money in the form of grants and CBD fi- uh, funds and all that stuff," right? So we think, "Oh, boy, well, we better at least look like we're trying." And we want to try. We want to carry our burden, but when you're doing it, the small community like San Juan Batista, as Richard James says, finding the places to do this is a little bit tricky. But that's what's happening right now, is that we are trying to comply with the state of California. Is that right, Richard?
Correct.
Did I, did I say that correctly?
And the, the tricky thing is the city, of course, is, isn't in the business of building housing.
No.
So you need to accommodate people who would like to build housing. So it's a little bit of a tricky position for a city. Uh, but a lot of cities are running scared because, uh, there was a city in Southern California that got sued by the-
HCD, yeah, I was gonna mention that.
Yeah, got sued for, yeah, was it Beverly Hills?
Huntington Beach.
No, it was Huntington Beach.
Huntington Beach.
Huntington Beach.
Beverly Hills got sued too.
Yeah, they've done some lawsuits against cities that are basically not trying to comply.
Right.
And so a lot of cities are running scared, but I'm not sure that you need to really be running scared if you're making a, a valiant effort to achieve what you're supposed to be doing.
That's right.
You know, I don't think they're, they're not going after cities like San Juan Batista that are making a real effort.
Don't make that effort. God, I think this is a good effort. Okay.
Yeah.
So there, just to get back to the planning commission and that extra site, the commission did drag staff to consider a fourth site. The commission also recommends taking option C off the table. Whether the council wants to go to that formal degree or not, I don't know, because option C is reflected throughout the housing element. And that might raise a red flag with the state. But you could obviously choose to treat it as off the table.
We could pass over it.
Yeah.
Informally, but not, we don't have to state it in words.
Right, I think it'd be safer if you just kind of agreed amongst yourselves that you weren't going to choose that one and left it in.
Well, yours hate that.
That would raise fewer red flags in Sacramento.
So these are our three options, right?
So, yeah, there are three options, um, to the rezoning. Uh, option one is to simply do a straight rezone to R three with the special conditions that are now mandated by the state legislature. Uh, two, you could rezone to mixed use and require that fifty percent of the site on the second floor, that would be typically, uh, be developed with apartments and allow possibility one hundred percent multifamily at the option of landowner. So in other words, you could do mixed use or you could do a hundred percent multifamily project, either or. Uh, or three, create an affordable housing overlay that retains existing commercial designation but allows a hundred percent multifamily at the option of the landowner. With no net loss, which means if there's already existing housing, you replace that in addition to what you're adding. And I wasn't at planning commission, but I believe Dawn related to me that planning commission recommended the option one, which was just a straight rezone to R three. Which is the simplest of the options. So, let's see, this was of course set up for adopting, um, these items tonight, but we're not doing that. But, and I think I've already gone over this note, that the housing element's been revised or will be revised to allow for a fourth possible rezoned site. And we will be, depending on timing, we either could make revisions to mitigated negative declaration or we could adopt it as it is and then issue an addendum the following week. And I think that might be the cleaner way to go. Is adopt the neg deck on October eighth and October fifteenth, acting on planning commission's October first recommendation. Adopt, uh, an addendum that covers the fourth site, if that's what's selected.
And that's my-
Is everybody following that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A couple.
There's two ways to do it. You could revise the neg deck, but that's a little scarier to me.
Yeah.
Because it's been out for public review and the more you change it, and I counted twenty places it needs to be changed, the more you change it, the harder it is to say that it was not substantial. You're allowed to make changes that aren't substantial, uh, which is defined as not raising up new environmental issue or in, or making an environmental, um, impact worse. But I wouldn't even go close to that personally. I would think you're safer with an addendum, adopt it as it is, do an addendum a week later. That's probably safer. Addendums do not require any public review. And there's basically no guidance in the guide, state guidelines on how to do one.
Yeah.
Get it in.
I thought an addendum to-
And the other consideration too is probably the timing between planning commission October first and your city council meeting October eighth. There's not a lot of room in there to make any reaction to what they've decided. You know, as far as getting you new documents and such, so.
But what they would decide on October, what's the planning commission date?
October first, I believe.
Yeah.
October first. What they would decide on October first is nothing less than the fourth site?
They'd be picking a site.
Option D?
Option A, B, C, or D, uh, we don't think they'll do C.
Would therefore, the, the selection or choice of option D be subject to council review or no?
Yeah.
It would?
It's a recommendation to the council.
Right, and the council will take that up on the week after the special meeting, October fifteenth.
Okay. And then you do the addendum after that meeting?
The addendum would be prepared in time for the October fifteenth meeting.
So, what would be, what would be before the council at that time is, hey, here's a new site and here's an addendum to cover it. What do you think? That would be presented to the council at that time?
Yeah.
Along, along with the implementing ordinances, there are several ordinances.
Yeah, we need to figure out what we're doing as far as an addendum to, for the planning commission, but, and they're only ma- a recommending body, so I don't think we have to have an addendum prepared for them to make a recommendation on a different site. Because they're not taking the actual action, that's subject to sequo. They're only making a recommendation.
And the smart money says-
City attorney having to bank this down reasonably?
Paul's property?
Maybe that's the one that they-
That's the one you think that's gonna come back on October first, is the recommendation for the Hollis Chalmers?
D.
House? Okay.
Whose house is that?
It's that old Chalmers' house. It's across from Mission Village Apartments.
Oh, the old Rodriguez, where the Rodriguez used to live?
Yeah, the Rodriguez.
Rodriguez, yeah.
It's a very, it's a historic house because of who lived there. Basically, it's a cool house. I'd love to see it fixed up, but basically it's famous because of who lived there, right, Carl?
Well, the input that I got was that, that-
What?
Yeah, let's, let's give her a chance.
I'm gonna put in a story.
Why don't we invite the public speaker, Mayor?
I'm just calling him.
If the council has more questions?
The input that I got was that, that, that is the only house in San Juan Batista of that, uh, style. The agr- the, uh, construction and everything is just unique.
That's correct. French Gothic wood.
Yeah, it's the only one of us, you know, so we need to maintain-
Gable dance going all the way around. It's a cool house. We like it. Yeah, I do too.
I think we need to get-
I actually know the people who live there, so.
Mary, do you want, are you ready to move forward? Let's move forward.
No, that's the last slide.
So, okay, yeah. Council have any questions?
Any questions?
No.
No? Do we?
Members of the public, uh-
Public? There any questions? Comments?
Am I being on the wrong?
You're on.
Okay. Thank you, members of the council. I did attend the two public hearings on the housing element and I also attended the planning commission meeting. Just briefly, they, um, they didn't like C because there are a lot of people here from Lang Street and there's a creek there, apparently it's a flood zone, there are a lot of animals, foxes, et cetera, et cetera. And so, um, it just didn't look like an appropriate place for dense housing. But, um, there was an architect there who apparently, uh, is working with the owner to build some single-family housing there. Um, my concern has to do with the ordinances. They have not been vetted. And there is an ADU, uh, accessory dwelling unit ordinance that just mirrors exactly what's in the statute. And the statute gives us greater discretion to, um, vary that as long as it's not inconsistent with the statute. And our current, uh, ordinance, which is called a secondary dwelling unit, which is what the statute used to be called, was also adopted pursuant to the earlier version of the statute. So now, um, an ADU can be up to twelve hundred square feet. We had a six hundred square foot limit. Uh, there's nothing in there about design review. And I have been in communication with staff and Dawn and he checked with EMC and apparently, you know, the definition of ministerial is really kind of strange. Uh, because the way it reads is anybody can just walk into the front desk and be required to get the permit to build the ADU. I'm very concerned about design review because we're a very historic city. And, you know, we should have an opportunity to review the design to make sure it fits. And apparently that is doable, but that's not in the ordinance, uh, the proposed ordinance, the, the one that's to be adopted. And I have the same concerns with the affordable housing, uh, statute, that's ordinance that's gonna be coming before you. There's nothing in there about design review and apparently that, uh, city can do that. You can't vary like the twenty units per acre, you know, and all of these specifications that are in there, but you can, uh, you can't avoid the person actually building it, but you can have additional requirements, um, such as design review. So those, those are my main concerns, that we have no design review in these proposed statutes. On the ADU too, we had specifications, like if you've got a one-story house, you could only build a one-story ADU in your backyard. This one doesn't have that in there, nothing like that. And there's a, a lot of stuff about garages and converting garages. So the statute, the ordinance needs to be looked at carefully to see if that's what we want for our city and, and we can amend it, um, as long as we don't, are not inconsistent with the state statute.
Your time's up.
Yeah, let me, let me ask a question quickly though. The, there's a new state statute on ADUs, is that correct?
Yes, now they're calling it ADUs, before they called it secondary units.
So the, the new state statute also has no design review requirements, is that correct?
It's not in the state legislation.
Okay, so-
But we can add it.
Okay, so we can do better, in other words?
Exactly.
If we choose.
Right. And then with the ADA accessibility and all of that, um, it refers to lower-income households. I, I can't remember which statute it's in. But this came up at, before the planning commission and there was actually another person, an attorney, who also asked about the definition for that. And the definition is in the Health and Safety Code, so I think there should be a reference in, in our, in our ordinance to do, so that people know what it, what it's meant by lower-income household. Anyway, just some technical things, um, and so that, those are really my concerns.
Thank you.
Can I just mention the Chalmers' house real quick?
Your time's up.
Oh.
It's been up, it's been up for a while.
Okay, Mr. Chalmers was an architect, a real architect here in town, and he built a number of houses in town that are on the national register. And that was his personal residence. I was on the HRB way back when and, um, it was looked at by an engineer and all of that and it was in good condition. The owner was asked to mothball it. Not a very good job was done in that, the city never enforced it. But there was an earlier plan to have boutique hotel housing, co- co-housing, wine tasting, um, a, uh, what do you call it, welcome center, a fake, um, water tower because it's the gateway to our city. So that, that was B and Chalmers were kind of seen together as an opportunity to really build something substantial, uh, as the gateway to the community.
And that would be built around the Chalmers' house, correct?
And the Chalmers' house is gonna be saved, it was gonna be in the middle and it was gonna be like an art gallery and community gathering place, especially for the residents that lived, uh, on that property and the co-housing.
Was that Todd Dubois' plan?
That was Todd Dubois' plan, which did, he had to put it on the ballot and it passed because we had a one percent growth ordinance at the time. Anyway, sorry to take up extra time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, that concludes public input. We will move this for the next agenda, correct? This item?
Continue it to a special meeting.
Uh, special meeting?
Continue to, right, October eighth.
Has it been scheduled or?
October eighth is the date that we have scheduled.
Right, we have time, it's only a ten-day notice.
Okay, so we are-
So do, do we need a motion or can we just kind of let it slide?
We need a motion to continue it to a date certain. And the date certain is-
October eighth.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to, um, move this item to October eighth?
Mr. Mayor, I may not-
Pardon? Continue it, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I, I make a motion, this agenda, I mean, continue to October eighth for further discussion and determination at that time. But let me table that motion for a second, just make a commentary or a comment upon what we just heard. First of all, I am in a hundred percent agreement with Carl Vaughn that there should be design review in anything that happens on these spaces. Design review is imperative. Absolutely critical for this town. Some of you may have read my, um, posts on Facebook listening. If you would have seen how windmill market first came in as, as presented to San Juan Batista, it would blow your hair back, it was terrible, versus how it looks today. That's through the process called design review. That's through the process called design review. Same with the Village or the...
Mission Village Apartments.
Mission, Mission Village Apartments. When those first came in, they were awful. Is Rachel Ponce still here? Yeah, Rachel's here. Her husband fought valiantly against, against that design, didn't he? It was a bad design, but now they look pretty cute. That was through a process called design review. So I think anything, especially the properties we're considering over there across from Valero, which is the gateway, which is right near our corner, has to go through a very strict design review process. So Carl, I could not agree with you more. Um, and I also think that we need to figure out this whole lower-income household number specifically. What are we talking about with that? So that would be specific on that. So with those comments, I would let my motion rest, waiting for a second.
So I would like to make a few extra comments.
Oh, geez.
Dan got me started, so, and I'm going to address them to the students out here. So ADUs, uh, for a long time, I'm not talking San Juan here, I'm talking, let's say, Southern California in particular, in particular, Los Angeles, were outlawed. And as you may or may not know, we have a housing crisis that's been going on right now. As you know, housing prices are shooting through the roof. Rents have doubled and tripled in the last three years in many locations. And so ADUs is a quick and easy way for a place like Los Angeles to get many thousands of extra living units in very quickly. But I am in complete agreement with Dan that we need design review on any building, including ADUs built in San Juan.
Right. That's true.
A hundred percent.
And I'm for that.
Okay, we have a motion on the table?
And I second it.
And you second it. Any more discussion? Any input from the public? There are no questions? We'll call for the questions. Yeah, you have a comment?
Sorry, I don't have a card.
That's okay, we know you.
But I did attend the public, um, housing element workshops, and one of the things that was very apparent, especially at the first one at the VFW Hall, was the concern about low-income housing, just what it is. And, um, I know that he was very surprised at the, the out, um, the turnout of that first, uh, meeting. He didn't have enough, uh, handouts for everybody that, that showed up. But that was one of the main concerns of, of that meeting, was the low, low-income housing, just what it is and where it's going to be. So that, that is a big consideration, and I think you all should think about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
If not, we'll, uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, we call for the question. All in favor, respond by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we'll go to action item six, approve of policy for established procedures and timeliness for council meeting agenda management. Staff report?
Do you want to speak to this, Trish? Okay.
Council members and the mayor, um, this item was brought up last month, and, uh, through discussion, the council asked staff to go back and reconsider, um, work on the part about it taking two, um, agreement of two council members to come forward with an item for the agenda. So, um, city manager and I worked on this, and that was eliminated. And as well as, uh, I think the previous one said that, um, they would have to come forth in a written statement, possibly by e- or an email, and that has been, uh, eliminated, that it would take, you know, one person working with, uh, coming forth to the city manager, and the city manager would work with the mayor to put the items on the agenda. So I hope it satisfies the, the council.
I just have a question.
Uh-huh.
Um, is it calendar days or business days? Talking about, um, on the, when, if we have something that we want to...
It said, like, the thirteenth day before the meeting.
Calendar day.
Calendar days.
Is it calendar days? Okay, that's right. Okay.
Okay. We have, is that your report?
Yes, that's it. So we have a resolution, um, to approve the policy.
Okay, we need, uh, further discussion. We need some public comment. Do we have any public comment? We have no public comment. We close public comment. Possible actions, the motion to approve the resolution adopting a policy regarding rules of procedure and placement of items on the agenda. The chair will entertain a motion.
I will move.
Mary, do we have a second?
So I have a voice now.
I think she wants to make the motion, but she's lacking a voice. She learned that.
John seconded it. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, we call for the question. All respond by aye, favor? Opposed? Motion carries. C, select honoree for National Philanthropy Day, November fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Trish?
Council members and the mayor, uh, yes, this is, uh, traditional for the council to select someone to honor a volunteer in the community, uh, to send to honor during National Philanthropy Day that the Community Foundation for San Benito County, um, has an event at the San Juan Oaks. And, uh, this year, they wanted, uh, specific concentration on people dealing, that deal, volunteers that dealing with the youth. And we've honored people of that caliber in past years, but this specifically is...
Is it dealing with youth or youth?
Youth programs, um...
Coaching.
Because I thought it was youth. I thought it was the, a youth that we had, we needed to select.
You're defining that as someone under twenty-one, right, or eighteen?
The youth under, yeah.
Trish, who were, who were the city's last three nominees? Do you remember?
They got a list. There's a list. There's a list.
Yeah, I, uh, put it in the staff reports after you first...
It's, it's there.
Right.
Anthony Ponce last year, uh, because of his involvement with the Junior Giants Summer Program, baseball program. Marina and Eric Gordon.
For the Cats.
For the Cats, which he brought forth.
And Shawna.
And in two thousand sixteen, it was Shawna Freels for, um, her work generally with our community.
So An- Anthony Ponce was, he wa- he was honored for working with youth.
Yes, he was.
Very, very appropriately, so, yeah.
Right.
But this year, they want to focus on youth, and, uh, I had a name that somebody submitted to me, uh...
I gave it to you.
Javier Waracha?
No, it's Xavier.
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 Right, he's a member of our youth commission?
Yes.
Yes.
I believe.
I know him a little bit.
I know him very well. But I mean, do we, do we have others, um, come up with names, other individuals that somebody might know of that, I mean, Xavier's the only one that I could think of?
The staff did not reach out.
When you need this by tonight?
Yes.
Oh, tonight?
Right now, we have to decide tonight?
Well, there's a timeline. Listen, we did it at the special meeting.
We had it on the last agenda, and so we're just bringing it back again.
So nobody else? Do you know any other youth, uh, kids that are active?
You want to go with...
We don't have...
Do I want to, uh, do I, I know...
Well, you know the guy.
I was going to say Jim Austin, just because of his trails and...
That was brought up last, yeah. Yes, I remember that he was, um...
Is he a youth?
I, I would...
He's, he's all about recreation and the outdoors and trails and stuff like that. He's not about youth particularly.
Used to be a high school teacher.
That kind of limits our choices.
Yeah, but that's what, uh...
Jim is seventy-one.
Oh.
He walked across America. He walked across the United States, walked.
So, you know, I could think of several off the top of my head, but, you know, it's, it's really, have they contributed to the commu- is that the judgment?
Well, let me tell you. I know Xavier.
I know you do.
And he is a Boy Scout, and he's done all his, you know...
Eagle Scout.
Yeah. He, he's always been very active. He's, he's, um, outgoing, and, um, he's a good kid. He's really a good kid. And so, I mean, that's why he came to mind.
No, I think he's, uh, he's, is involved as much as he can be. A student could be in the community, yes.
Yeah.
No, I, I think that's good.
Well, then, um, I'll nominate Ben Anderson for the same reasons. He's in the same Boy Scout troop, and he just got elected scout leader. Lives at Seventeen North Street.
He's a Boy Scout leader for the, for the San Juan Boy Scout troop?
Troop four twenty-eight, right up here, across the street, and, yeah, yeah.
And is he a, a young boy?
Uh, he's sixteen years old. Uh, he lives at Seventeen North Street, which is across the street from me, because it's how I know him.
So do we vote on these kids, or do we send both of them?
Can only send one person.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll go with Xavier, yeah.
Xavier?
That was suggested last time, and there were no...
And I, obviously, obviously...
You can nominate a group, though, so if you want to do the whole Boy Scout trip, you can probably... Which says you can nominate a group.
Send them all to San Juan Oaks? They'd turn that place...
And we got to feed them, too.
I love that idea, actually. The San Juan Batista Boy Scout troop, who has been working tirelessly in this community forever.
Yes.
Some of them carve our streets hard.
Exactly.
Do we have our budget?
They've done our...
So, okay, I think that's...
As an Eagle Scout project, right, Mary?
I think some of those, um, boys have moved on. So are you dealing with the existing group, or...
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I think the San Juan Batista Boy Scout troop...
How many are there?
Oh, I think there's about twelve. I'm not certain. I have to go ask Ben.
It won't break us, then, if we send them?
It might. Okay.
So then Xavier could stand and...
The troop leader?
Yeah.
Or the, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, what do you guys think?
I, I just said what I thought.
You're still with that? Well...
I'll go with, with him.
With Xavier?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, you want to make a motion?
He's eighteen, right? He's, or...
No, he's not. He's in high school.
Okay.
He's like sixteen or seventeen.
Okay, same age, okay.
So do we want to do this as a, as a motion, or do you just not do it by acclamation?
Well, either a consensus or a motion.
General consensus?
You have two nominees now.
Do we have to?
All right.
Well, we got, the chair will accept the nomination for youth, uh, philanthropy youth recognition.
Okay.
Of Xavier, Xavier?
Xavier. Waracha.
Did you make that motion, Mary?
I, I move that we send Xavier Waracha and, uh, honor him on the philanthropy, uh, day.
And John, you second?
I'll second, sure.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call for the question. All in favor, respond by aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you so much.
Do you know, do you know Eddie, Eddie Waracha? That's his dad.
Yeah. Okay, uh, item D, approve resolution for SB two planning grant. Staff report, city manager, Don.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, this is a, a simple matter, but, um, a housekeeping matter in any event. Um, cities smaller than, I think, twenty thousand are entitled to, uh, apply for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in SB two money. Uh, SB two is, is, uh, the, the housing program, um, put forward, uh, a year or so ago. Um, that also generated a lot of changes to our housing elements. So this is the state's way of saying, if you need help planning for affordable housing or, or planning in general in your community, uh, this is a grant opportunity. It's not competitive, but it is available on a first-come, first-served basis. We have to the end of the year to submit our application. Working again with EMC, because they are so familiar with their housing needs, we looked at the six criteria, um, and, and they're listed at the bottom of the first page. Uh, you could apply for any of these six topics. Rezone by permit, uh, rezone to permit by right, which is something we just talked about as far as rezoning our properties. Um, design and development standards, um, a specific plan, um, with sequoia streamlining, so taking a, a group of properties and studying how, uh, they might be planned for a planned development process with environmental clearance. Accessory dwelling units or other low-cost housing strategies, ways to, uh, make that easier for people to apply for. Um, expediting processing, which is something, um, that our housing element thinks we do a good job of. Um, housing-related infrastructure financing and, and fee reduction strategies, such as, uh, if it's affordable housing, then, then maybe, uh, you get a reduced impact fee assessment that would reduce the cost of building the housing. So I have a little analysis along the same lines, um, and, and looking at this, uh, staff was, was, uh, suggesting that we look at a specific plan, uh, mostly, uh, in conjunction with, uh, with the Caltrans grant that's due October eleventh, and a COG grant that's looking at the safety of Highway one fifty-six. So the specific plan then could address the property between the, uh, Deanser Trail and Fremont Peak and, and one fifty-six. And we have property owners that have come forward that want to, uh, they're asking us for annexation and possibly, uh, designing a community in a corridor there along the Alameda. So that was, uh, that was where we were heading, uh, with a grant application for the SB two money, and so we're asking that the council adopt a resolution allowing us to apply. And if there's more conversation to be had, uh, around how we use the funds exactly, then we can continue to have that conversation, but at least we have the resolution on file that, that allows us to apply.
So a quick question, is that a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars flexible enough that we can, um, use it for the specific plan?
Yes, that's, that's one of the six criteria.
Yeah, I saw that, but I just wanted to make sure.
And, and we might be able to use that to leverage private, uh, funds from the property owners along the corridor.
Okay, we'll open this for public comment.
Carl Vaughn? Thank you, members of the council. Carl Vaughn here. Um, I'm glad you're focusing on this specific plan. You may recall that, um, the city did get engaged in a lot of work on a specific plan for the area. Is that south of one fifty-six? And there was a lot of community involvement, a lot of great ideas, and I think it was near completion. Um, and I don't even know why it wasn't adopted, but it, we did get a grant to do that one, I believe, or we, we didn't finish paying somebody, I believe. I don't know what the reasons were. But we really need a specific plan for that area, 'cause we're getting piecemeal, uh, projects, you know? The copper leaf, the gas station, um, you know, whatever. So I'm hoping that we can do a specific plan for that whole thing. We have the Deanser Trail, um, you know, entry there. We've got Fremont Peak entry. I mean, there were some ideas for a big nature center, as I recall. Um, so a lot of work went into that. Maybe we can dig out the old material and kind of start from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? We know, close the public comment period. The motion is to approve resolution twenty nineteen, exact, authorizing an application for and receipt of Senate Bill two on twenty nineteen, planning grant program funds.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I wanted to have a little discussion.
Oh, okay.
I'll table it.
We had discussion, so go ahead. We'll think about it.
Um, I'm, I'm one of those persons who's been pushing for the specific plan for probably close to seven or eight months now, or maybe even past year. It's hard to, hard to remember sometimes, especially when you're getting older. Anyway, um, it's, it's really needed. Uh, there's a lot of things that we want to have happen out there, in- including some light industrial, maybe even some cannabis, where we have all these cannabis ordinances that we work so hard on, and then we, we, we want to plan for it. We want, and that's, this is the vehicle to do that, so it's really important.
Thank you, John.
So I'll second the motion.
Okay. So, Mary, any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, we call for the question. All in favor, respond by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, our final item on the agenda is to approve resolution affirming the city of San Juan Batista as a compassionate city. We have a report from a member of the strategic plan committee?
So, um, yeah, oh, good, Jennifer's here. Okay, Mr. Kennedy is out today, so.
All right.
We have three minutes.
I thought I would have to come much later, based upon how we operate on the school board. I'm on the, I'm the president of the school board here, so I was thinking, I'm on the last, it might be really late. But you have an efficient meeting, so I'm going to be really quick and just be here to answer questions. This is a, a, um, really international movement, and... This is a, a really international movement, and we've been asked to consider being a part of as a city. And we would join fourteen cities and counties in California, and California is slated to become the first state, to become a compassionate state. But what does this mean? It means that it's encouraging communities to look at the kind of issues that they might be facing in terms of human need and being compassionate to our neighbors. And it's part of a network, so there are some tools that people can use to organize. There's some ways to connect and, and be able to get resources from other people across the state and internationally in education. And they work with different sectors of, of need. And I think for us at the strategic planning committee, it looked like this would be a good way to address our, our wellness piece that we've been working on. We've had a couple of wellness fairs, but this would allow us to kind of broaden our vision of what our community needs. And in our first discussion, you know, a lot of it, we can see that the county is providing services, or maybe there's some lacking, some needs that need to be provided. So, as a compassionate city, we would be looking for those resources and organizing to, to make sure that people are served. So, I think that the other element is that the compassionate California has a compassionate arts component, and already we've kind of umbrellaed our mandala project with that. Pass this around. Because we would have that connection as well. And I happen to be on the compassionate California Steering Committee, so obviously a connection there. Do you have questions about the resolution?
I have one question for you.
Yeah.
Does any of the teachers at, at the schools that you are in charge of as a president of the school board make a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars a year?
A hundred and ninety, I don't think so. Is that the median income to buy a house?
Yeah, yeah. It is to buy a house in Copperleaf or in Rancho Vista. So, I'm getting to a point here, and the point is that, that, that teachers and police officers and firemen need to live in the, at least I strongly feel, need to live in the community or at least near the community that, that serve him. And right now, that's not affordable if they're just on that one salary. And so, one of the things, we talked about low-income housing, but there's also a ranking for affordable housing. And so, affordable housing is now housing for, for teachers and firefighters and police officers, people that we used to, what I used to call middle class, and, and I still do. You know, it's not, and that's not a derogatory term to me. It's what I am. So, I, I think we should, we could, I guess, my point is, we could be compassionate by, by generating some affordable housing in our community.
I just would like to add that I went online and I looked up on the compassionate city and all the other cities that are involved. And I learned a lot in reading what I read and what it's all about.
I think we'd be the smallest city.
We probably, we probably would be, but...
And I think we actually have a lot to offer. I was feeling like, it, it was like, are we starting something new? Well, it's something we're already doing, but it would be nice to, to share that with the rest.
Yeah, and, and it talked about this gentleman that lived in Mexico. He had a house, and the house was just like the Chalmers' house that is down the street. It looked like that. And the compassionate group came in, and they redid the whole thing. And he was so grateful. And anyway, I just, I think it's a great idea.
Great. Thank you. Any other question?
Questions? We did get a letter, I don't know, from, you know, regarding this, and I don't know if it's, we just submitted for the record, or do we read it?
Oh, the, the resolution?
No, there's a letter that anti your, your motion from somebody by the name of Linda McIntyre.
Okay.
She used to be city clerk here, quite some time ago.
Pardon?
She, she used to be city, this job right here.
Okay.
She used to be, about ten, twelve years ago.
Really?
Yeah.
She was at Marsland?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's Harvard, was Harvard, Matt, or Marsland, yeah. Was it only five or six years ago? Okay. Five flies.
Do I need to read this letter to put it in, or? No? Okay, cool. All right. So, any, any other, any public comments? All right. If there's no public comments, we'll move forward. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution affirming the city of San Juan Baptista as a compassionate city.
Aye, so moved.
Mary? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And John? Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, we call for the question. All in favor, respond by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Be compassionate. This woman says we're compassionate anyway, but still. We got final comments, city council?
Did you get a letter?
Yes, there is a final comment.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, September thirtieth, in, in the big city of Seaside, Representative Panetta, myself, and Selina City Councilman Steve McShane are having a clean energy workshop and fair. I invite you all to come. I have this flyer in the back, okay? Including all you wonderful students, okay? You're close to Seaside.
Bike ride. Any others? Any other comments?
I have a comment, yes.
Okay.
I spoke with the city manager about this, but I have not spoken with the city attorney about it. But I would like the mayor and my fellow council members to, to consider something akin to a motion for reconsideration, because it's my understanding, last month, I was super sick and missed the meeting, unfortunately. But an issue came before the council that pertained to splitting the Historic Resources Board from the Planning Commission. I have a lot of thoughts on that. And I think it's worthy of more deliberation. I would at least appreciate the opportunity to tell you. I haven't worn that hat, as your husband did too, for twelve years. It's next to impossible to be a Historic Resource member and a Planning Commissioner. So, I would just like an opportunity to bring that back and to relook at that.
I would...
You know, I would support it, but I had some feedback from the Historic Board Commissioners, and they, they prefer to stay.
I had the opposite. I had the opposite. I talked to Shirley, and she feels the opposite.
Shirley feels the opposite. So, anyway, I just think it's worth another look. So, my, so, to Deb Mall, or to the city attorney aside, is, can you have a motion for reconsideration? For a passed council decision?
I think it's already been done.
And I'll ask Trish too, but I don't see anything here that goes to reconsideration. I mean, usually, that's where you'd find it. So, in this instance, I mean, it was the, a planning commissioner request, and I think you still would go through, you'd have to re-put it on the agenda. It's not really a reconsideration, so...
Resolution or, or formal action taken. And, and in fact, to that end, Deb, in speaking with a, a planning commissioner, he was asking me to bring this item back October first for conversation. So, I, of course, agreed to do that. We would put it on the planning commission agenda, and then we could have a summary back to the council. He was asking questions, the, the council said that they would support historic resources. Well, what does that mean? What does that look like? And he was looking for a little more substance from the council, so...
I thought our discussion was kind of short.
Well, we all voted on it. You did too.
Yeah, I know.
And you, and you said, you commented that you agreed that they should stay.
Thank you, Professor, and see you next time. Hopefully, we'll be seeing you around town.
Yeah. But, but before that, I said we should discuss it and study it some more, and, because I'm still, I'm still on the fence. It's not an easy, there's valid arguments on both sides. You know, it is hard to find planning commissioners, okay? And it was, and I'm not sure it's going to be any easier finding an H R V person. But it does need to be separated. They are separate.
Well, and it's just two completely separate sets of skill sets, right? You've got land use versus history. So, on the history side, you have people that may not care very much about R three and affordable housing and stuff like that, but they care a lot about history and architecture and design and things like that. On the planning side, you have people that are really in tune with those kinds of things. It's just two separate sets of skill sets, redundant. But therefore, I don't want to make my pitch now, but I would like the opportunity to talk about it, and I was really sorely upset that I wasn't here to have that conversation last week.
I'm, I just fear that we may be setting a precedence, and now anybody can do that. So, you know, that's my worry, that we, we're opening a, you know, can of worms.
We made a decision.
We already made a decision, let's stick to it. Otherwise, we're going to be going back and forth, back and forth, and opening it for future. That's my, my two cents.
I understand that, but it's, but something as important as this is, what's the harm in just talking about it some more? And maybe this result in the same, maybe a walk.
Well, I, I agree with you, Dan, but however, you know, somebody comes up, well, I wasn't here at the meeting, you got to have it again. It's going to happen. You did it for Dan DeVries, why can't you do it for me? That's where we're at. We're opening a can of worms.
I, I would like even more time. I, myself, need to get up to speed on historic preservation and historic ordinances. If we could bring it back, because I've got three ordinances pending from Deb already for the next agenda, and she's suggesting either in November or maybe after the first of the year. Would that be a reasonable compromise?